All right. We'll now call the city council record meeting to order for November the eighteenth. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we just ask that you would meet us here tonight, Father. Oh, we ask that your Holy Spirit be poured out on this town so strong, Father, there not be any place to hide from your spirit in this town, Father, in Jesus's name, Lord. We ask that you bless each and every person here. Father, I ask that you bless the city of Avon Park, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May it be seated. Madam clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes. Here, count here. Here. Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have some very important swearing in to do.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and under the Charter of the City of Avon Park, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of council member on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations to all the newly minted council members. It seems awfully familiar around here, but. All right. Is there anything on item number five?
Yes, Mayor, due to the length of the item and the fullness of the agenda, we would like to bring the fam cabo lease forward to be the first item, if that's what you all agree to.
Very good. All right, Mr. Clary, will you be taking the lead on the lease?
Yes, sir. You've got a presentation. We can bring it up. Mayor and council members. The good news is. Whoops. There we go. Today, we're going to talk about the receipt of the Record of Decision from the Federal Aviation Administration related to the executive airport for the city. And also just a brief summary of the lease, which you'll be considering tonight on your agenda.
Excellent.
I think we're moving on slow here. There we go. The Record of Decision was received on October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. It was successful and approved a long-term lease between the city and Florida Airport Management, KVO LLC. It authorizes, we'll call it fam KVO, to operate and manage the airport under the lease. And they'll also assume all grant obligations, both past and future, and the requirements associated with those. Fam KVO will pay the city an annual rent payment, which I'll go over a little bit more in a minute. And subject to future revenue positive airport operations, it approves revenue sharing between fam and the city, which I'll also go over in more detail. Also in this, the city must agree to accept the airport back in the case of bankruptcy. Fam KVO, that's a requirement of FAA regulations. And the city will be responsible for preparing a transition plan in year twenty five of the lease. Now, if you extend it, you can extend that as well, but it's basically five years from the end of the lease to prepare a transition plan for the city to retake the airport. They asked that the lease be executed within ten days of the Record of Decision. They extended that to November twenty ninth. The current time for scheduled closing of the lease is this Friday. The lease of the airport will include everything except for the ball fields, the city water utility, and also classic cladium. So everything else will fall under the lease. This includes all buildings, all fixed furniture, the building itself, as well as airport, and also the operations and equipment. We'll go into that. The city will retain the title to the buildings and all the ground and everything, so that will remain in the name of the city as far as those deeds overall. The LSC will be responsible for annual rent payments, operations of maintenance of the airport, promote growth of the airport, and direct interaction with the tenants, as well as Federal Aviation Administration and Florida DOT on behalf of the city. There will be a handback at the end of the term, and they will be responsible for providing it back in as good or better as it is today. The lease term, the initial term is thirty years. There are two extensions, one for ten years and a second for up to nine years. The max term would be forty nine years. There are conditions related to those extensions. Obviously, it must be up to date on rent as well as maintaining and while keeping the airport in good shape. Rent calculation starts at eighty four thousand a year. That will be updated at least every five years through a new appraisal. And if there are major changes at the airport, such as major buildings added or those types of things, the city can ask for more frequent appraisal updates. And that rent will be adjusted based on per market value at the time of those updates. There are additional rent payments will be for two loans that the city has made to the airport. And in addition, the city has advanced funds from the general fund. Overall, those payments coming back as well as the rent to the city can be used for any uses within the city. They do not have to be reinvested into the airport. Okay, so that's a benefit to the city. Rent credits can be applied. For example, if fam KVO uses their own money to improve the airport and make improvements to the airport, you can do rent credits for that in a particular year, which might reduce the rent for that year if they are making improvements. Again, that's not from grants, that's from their own invested funds.
And that doesn't carry over, carry over for multi-years?
No.
Okay.
No, it would be, it would be a one-time credit.
To be perfectly clear, they spend a hundred million dollars, twenty twenty-nine, it doesn't carry over past twenty thirty.
Right.
Okay.
Rates and charges, you approve the current rates and charges for the airport. That is a posted rate scheduled now. Fam KVO can update that based on Consumer Price Index increase. Anything above that would have to be approved by the city council. And my understanding is fam intends to bring those rates and schedules back to you anyway for periodic review. There is a return on investment. Fam will be allowed, fam KVO will be allowed to recoup their cost. That's part of the lease that's included in the lease for funds they've already invested. In addition, for future investments, when it becomes revenue positive above that, there will be a revenue sharing between the city and fam. Part of that will go to repay the general fund reimbursements. Once those are repaid, the revenue here coming to the city would be reinvested into the airport under federal FAA regulations. There are performance standards built into the lease, which are listed here, which were developed by our technical experts, as well as our legal experts to ensure that the airport is adequately maintained within regulations and also in good condition. There are financial controls and guidelines. Any advances you do to fam would obviously have to go through your annual budget process. There are not any automatics in there. Those would automatically be, those would have to go through the annual budget process. Fam KVO does have positions that are required to be on site, including the airport manager or maintenance manager. And they also would have a planner and finance director. Those can be part-time, depending on the needs of the airport. They cannot pledge the asset of the airport, meaning the deed in the buildings. They can pledge the lease and the revenue from the lease associated with that, but they cannot pledge the fixed assets as part of their overall approach. They will have to provide an annual budget. Financial report and audit will be provided to the city as well as to the regulating agencies each year. In addition to that, DOT does periodic inspections, which they will come on site and inspect the condition of the airport, provide a report for that, and they will be responsible for giving the city a copy of that as well. There is performance monitoring, and they will provide self-reporting, which they will provide to you of certain elements each month and each year, as well as to the regulating agencies during each year. These are approvals that you have to approve. If there's any change in the airport land, if there's any change in the airport master plan, it has to come before the city council. Any major projects above twenty million, any city advances to the airport, financial or otherwise, disposition of any assets out there, airport rates and charges, which I already remember, mentioned above the CPI, the extension of the leases, as well as sale or assignment of the lease to another party and any subleases they may do that extend beyond the term of the lease. Now, tenant leases they will be doing in the future will be considered subleases to this lease. So that's why we're mentioning that. So if they do a tenant lease, say they're in year twenty-five of the lease, and it's a thirty-year lease, if they do a seven-year lease, that's going to have to come back to you for a review and approval because it goes beyond the term of their lease as an example. And the city may step in if, for whatever reason, they are not meeting FAA regulations or FDOT regulations. One consideration, and this has been brought up to the city council before, FDOT by law can't make grants under this particular structure from aviation grants, which typically have been used to match in accommodation with city funds and Federal Aviation Administration funds to do improvements out there. The city did adopt a resolution to propose a change in statute for that, which has been submitted to various individuals associated with the legislative session to try to move that item this particular in the twenty-five.
That legislative delegation means should be coming up pretty soon. Is everybody keeping track of that? Because it, you need to, if you want to propose a change, you need to talk to your legislative delegation first, and they meet here in Highlands County at the.
Right.
And you need to get a sponsor, you need somebody to sponsor that. Just throwing that out there because if it's, it's got to be pretty soon, I'm thinking, because usually current in November or early December, really early December.
The transportation industry typically runs a bill each year, and I reached out to one of their lead lobbyists and asked if they would be willing to include this in their package, and their reaction of that was positive.
Yeah.
So my hope is they will run that as part of what we call the industry bill that runs for the transportation industry. And I'll keep you posted if I see that pop up in their bill.
I'd still recommend a, somebody, a sponsor from our local delegation. Thanks.
So next steps would be to authorize the mayor to execute the lease at closing. And to also Florida DOT is reviewing the lease as requested by FAA. They'll send back any comments on that by the end of December, and the city will be responsible for sharing that with FAA. Obviously, have any substantive comments that will be brought back to the city and fam for consideration. Fam is responsible for providing the signed lease to FAA, notifying them they're taking over the airport. And we also have to do a closeout. You currently have an airport trust fund that the city owns and operates now. That trust fund will transfer over to fam. And they will be responsible for that. That is a trust of the airport revenues and the expenses. So it will continue in the same manner as if the city had it, but under fam KVO's management going forward. And we had a meeting earlier today to talk about a process to do that and to do that as quickly as possible. Under the lease, there's a longer term, but we're going to try to do it quicker so that everyone can have kind of a clean cutoff and go ahead and move fairly quickly. There also will be a process to assign the leases, the current tenant leases over to fam KVO. And all the buildings and equipment through the lease will be transferred to their management and operations going forward. That I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions for law?
Back on page one fifty-nine. Back on page one fifty-nine. It talks about the noise complaints that they must respond to noise complaints within forty-eight hours. So can you explain that? Is that by residents? If residents should make a complaint about the noise, then fam has forty-eight, two days to reply to, to try to fix it?
Yes, ma'am. That is essentially the FAA regulation. So they would be responsible, and I don't think they'll take two days. But they have up to forty-eight hours to respond to noise complaints, whether it's from neighbors or however that comes up.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have. I'm, I want to piggyback on that. They have forty-eight hours, say forty-eight or twenty-four?
Forty-eight.
To respond or correct?
To respond. Now, you may not be able to correct.
Right. That's what I.
So you'll, you'll respond. But obviously, if it's an issue that's within the regulation that needs to be corrected, it will have to be corrected. But if it's just a noise complaint that is an item that can't be, it's just a plane landing or something like that, they would respond to them and talk to them about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
He, Mayor, he's just going to go over the contract, right? Is TJ or?
I was just about to ask if they had anything to add.
Maybe we'll open up the public hearing at this point.
Sure. So this will need to be a public hearing. So we want to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the fam cabo long-term lease approval. Public hearing for the item is now open. Anyone wishing to ask any questions or make any comments on this lease approval can now do so.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized? This is Dave Banner from Capitol Cures.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, one is that airport noise is regulated exclusively by the federal government. So the two questions that were raised by the council members are very good questions, but I do think it's important for everyone to understand that, that there is a national plan regarding regulation of noise that, that has to be complied with, and it, it's something that each individual airport can't regulate. And that's, when you think about having a national airspace system, it does make sense, but it is frustrating sometimes to people when they find that, you know, you don't have the ability to fully regulate it on a local level. The second thing I wanted to note is that in addition to authorizing the mayor to sign the lease on behalf of the city, we're also asking that the mayor sign on behalf of the city an assignment and assumption agreement pursuant to which fam KVO will take over all of the grant agreements between the city and both FDOT and the FAA so that the city will no longer be directly responsible for compliance with those agreements. It will be fam KVO. And that's an FAA requirement. That was one of the requirements in the Record of Decision. And the last thing I'll just note is that the Record of Decision was remarkably clean. They, they, they have approved all of the requests that we made, including allowing the city to use the rent payments for any legal city purpose and allowing fam KVO to be the grant recipient going forward and to be the party that's responsible for compliance with the grant. So this is, I think, very much in keeping with what the city council had asked the, its team to negotiate and what the FAA is granting.
Okay. Is there any other public speakers? Seeing none, the public hearing for the fam cabo long-term lease approval is now closed. Once again, I'll bring it back to the council. Sure. Is there anything to add from fam?
No, nothing to add. Great summation and happy to be here tonight.
Very good.
Um. Is Charlie Brown here? I got a couple of questions for Charlie Brown.
We'll have to get him up to a microphone somewhere. Just give the name and organization real quick.
Charlie Brown with Florida Airport Management.
How you doing, Charlie Brown? Charlie Brown, perhaps you can give a quick synopsis of breaking the ground starting next year and what would take place so that the public were better?
Of course. Excuse me. I mean, as mentioned, we do have to move some legislation with Florida DOT to move forward with some of those projects that they would have to be in on, whether that be the fence or a beacon project, but we do have state funding for the widening of the road. And so that's something that we're going to be working on right away. And then that'll be in tandem with, you know, funding that we secure with financing on building some new facilities as well.
And so all of this would start next year, twenty-five?
That, that, that's the.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
And, and perhaps you can tell us or tell me, you, you got different phases?
Yes, we have different phases, but I, I don't want to go too far into saying that it's going to happen right away just because we, we, there are some things statutorily we need to clear up that, that'll add to the speed.
Okay.
But I mean, yes, we do have a phased approach.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Charlie Brown since he's up here? Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council?
I do. I have some questions. These are for JT.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I don't mean to make these questions uncomfortable with anybody. It's not directed at anybody, but I need to know for the record, do you fam or any of your associates work with or have worked with any members of this council or their family in their own personal business?
Oh, ma'am.
What's up?
No, ma'am.
No. And has fam, you or any of your associates been promised anything, whether it was financial or favors by anyone on their council, on this council or their family?
No, ma'am.
And does any member of this council have anything to gain personally by this transaction by favor or financial?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Okay. Any other question? Get something, Jerry? All right, Jerry, did you happen to get the language that?
Yeah, so the motion that's been recommended by the, our consultants is as follows. I move to approve the fam cabo long-term lease in the form submitted to this meeting. With any changes approved by the mayor, the execution and delivery of such lease by the mayor on behalf of the city conclusively evidencing such approval and such other agreements, certificates, and related closing papers as may be necessary and desirable, subject to approval as to form of such lease and any changes thereto and such additional agreements, certificates, and relating closing papers by council to the city. If you wish to move forward with approval, then you can say so moved.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember? Yes. Yes. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I do have a request since we passed, and I don't want to interrupt you. I've got a long agenda, but would it be rude or against the quorum to take a group photo?
No, go ahead.
With, with all the staff in the council?
Make it quick.
All right.
Are we standing? Going up there?
All right, I'd just like to thank the outside council before they head out of here for all their dedication. Was a long time coming. Thank you to all the staff members and most of all to fam for staying put and seeing this out. We very much appreciate the dedication. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. This will be for items six through eleven. Does any council member wish to remove any of these items?
I do. I wish to remove number nine.
Number nine. All right.
And number eight.
And number eight. Okay, so six, seven, ten, and eleven. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Can number eleven be on the consent agenda if it's asking for a donation and it has a range?
Six, seven, and ten. Does anyone care to make a motion?
No. Eleven, she's.
I understand. Six, seven, and ten are still on.
Oh, okay.
Does anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items, C, six, seven, and ten.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number eight, Hurricane Milton debris removal. Do you have something in particular?
I'd just like an update on this.
All right, Jason? Could you please give us an update on the Hurricane Milton debris removal?
Good evening. So I spoke with, from Bob from Highlands County, solid waste, and we were will say so. Sorry. So we spoke today, currently just a originally, we kind of broke it up into quadrants, and we were waiting for the county to, to come in with their debris contractors. The mayor assisted greatly with that and, and helping expedite that process. We, so we broke it up into four areas. But prior to those four areas, we also did try to get the HOAs because the county was requiring that the HOA properties or that they felt were private roads would have to bring that out to the street. So we decided just to go in there and pick those up like crystal. that they felt were private roads would have to bring that out to the street. So we decided just to go in there and pick those up like Crystal Lake. Um, and some of the tighter areas like uh, around Lake Bird. And we also did a Gaster Road, some of the communities that were up there. So we, we started there and then we moved into the northeast quadrant, which would be a bisecting road of um, if you had uh, Lake Avenue and Main Street, that would be your, your bisecting lines. So we did the northeast side. Cause that was closer to our uh, dumping area. We figured we can get more loads and get out faster, uh, and it had a bigger impact. So we did that. We've taken care of that area. There's still some that's on the, the west side of Lake Avenue that we'll be getting to. Um, hopefully not too long from now. And uh, we have I was given a map today by Bob from Solid Waste, so he requested that we assist with um, with picking up an area. Chrissy, are you able to pull that up at all on the, on the email? Can you? I, I emailed you something. I don't know if you can pull it up, an attachment? But it was, it was an area that was just um, let me bring it up myself. So it's an area just south uh, Lake Tulane, which is also part of county properties, because we're assisting the, in the agreement, we're assisting the county. So this is this is it. She kind of gets it up there. If you see the highlighted areas, that's on that, that's on that map. Those are the areas that we're gonna take care of. And then the county is going to go ahead and um, they have their debris contractors, I think. Let me see how many they had here. I think you had five, uh, five contractors or five, five equipment, different pieces of equipment that they're out picking up. They're currently picking up in the northwest section. So we got the northeast section pretty much taken care of. They're working in the northwest. We are currently working, we've been working in the southwest section. I mean, si- southeast section and then basically I guess it's going to be the southwest section that's going to be done last. But they are expecting, they had a, they had a date of January eleventh to be completed with this uh, pickup. That was their target, but they feel like they're moving so quick that they're going to be able to uh, beat that. But that's just the, the update that was given to me that I sent off. And um, so once they start picking picking up their area, the contractors, we finish our area, we'll go back to doing our our bulk waste and regular yard debris pickups as, as normal. They may um, they are likely going to request that we assist with some of the C and D. So some of the areas that has some C and D, construction and demolition, basically stuff that broke off a house, not not uh, furniture or anything like that, that we'll, we'll get that. But if the C and D will go ahead and assist and take that out to the county landfill. So that's part, that's part of our agreement. And what's going out there, that's all through, um, that's through the county. Uh, we're, we're going to see if we can, you know, it's in place to, to try to get reimbursed for our, our time and uh, the labor for our, our machinery and personnel. It's, it looks like it's, it's going to start going real fast. Um, we've, we've made pretty good progress. I know some areas, it seems like we, you know, we need to do more, but now it's, it's really hitting um, overdrive and, and we're moving along. There's also East of Memorial, the county's currently working out there as well with some crews, East of Memorial. So.
I, I have a question for mayor. So Jason, what, what date did they start here in Avon Park? Did you know?
We started, we started picking up directly after the, the last council meeting. I think it was like a day or two later that we got with our team and, and uh, assigned some of the areas and we went out and got, got Crystal Lake first. So I, it was within the, like, two days after our last council meeting.
Okay, so as of close the business today, um, what percentage would you say, I mean, did they, did they tell you estimate percentage that they've picked up so far?
I, I would probably say like thirty, maybe thirty percent would be a good number.
Okay. That's all I have, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, I don't believe there's anything here to we're just ratifying the interlocal, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the amendment ones interlocal agreement between Highlands County, Florida and the city of Avon Park for removal of emergency disaster debris.
I'll make a motion to approve C eight to ratify the approval of amendment one to the interlocal agreement between Highlands County and the city of Avon Park.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, replacement of the generator at the sheriff's substation.
So Ms. Melanie, uh, how long, how long have we known that this generator was bad? Or did it just something that just happened?
No.
The reason why I'm asking Melanie is because it wasn't included in the budget at all, wasn't never mentioned.
No, it was a um, project that the previous city manager was working on.
Uh huh.
And we've been looking for, to get quotes for probably about a year and a half because of the age of the generators and the size of the generators. So it took and that long to get the quotes to come in.
Oh, okay.
And we had to actually go with Sourcewell, which is a company that goes out to bid. Um, we looked for local companies and nobody local would bid.
Uh huh.
And this is, this generator is for the storm?
It's for the sheriff's substation.
But it's going to be used for the storm? Or just
It's a backup generator?
Any, any power outage.
Yes.
But
And there's two generators there. My understanding is one operates the um, administrative office and the other operates the, the jail part of it.
And this one is the jail part?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, okay.
Any other questions?
So when, when they do something like that and they completely remove the, the broken generators, that just discarded as garbage, I'm assuming?
They take it with them. That's part of their, their quote, so they'll take it with them.
Oh, so they, okay.
Yeah.
Correct. That's what I was, the removal of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to approve purchasing the Generac forty kilowatt industrial diesel generator for twenty-two thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars from ACF Standby Systems under the Sourcewell contract and approve installation of new generator by LEW Electrical Services for twenty-three thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, this is an event request for Christmas toys giveaway. See Mr. Herbert Sykes, is he here?
Yes.
Is. You will give uh, your name and the name of your organization, please?
Herbert Sykes, uh, member of organization for the, for this is uh, uh, Shining Stars program. Toys and uh, bikes giveaway for kids. We've been uh, partnering uh, with the city for the past uh, say several years. Um, ourselves, the local radio station and the city of Avon Park uh, reached out to those families who are uh, struggling during this time of year. And uh, this year we were uh, notified that one of our major partners would be dropping out and moving over to the Lakeland, Florida area. That's the video uh, station that was ran by Mr. um, Frankie Grover. Uh, so this year we are uh, running it pretty much uh, solo uh, with the assistance of um, some of the folks in this area here to help us out of this year. Um, and the reason we decided to really make a push this year to go, to go forward with it uh, was after the hurricane. We started getting a lot of uh, requests at, at our local congregation calling in what type of resource will we be able to provide and should assist families uh, because of the, the weather, the hurricanes and the financial uh, burden uh, that comes on from this time of year. And everybody was looking at uh, our normal economic situation. Uh, and so I told them, I said, well, we will do our best uh, to assist families in our Avon Park area and our surrounding communities uh, to support them this year with the help of our partnerships. And so uh, that's why we're here to make a request. The city's been good to us and providing us with the use of uh, the park to host it in. And we've been uh, very thankful for that and, and additional support that we get will go to that effort as well.
All right, any questions from the council?
I just have a couple. Is there a specific criteria that you guys will be following as far as who's going to be able to receive the toys, like any kind of registration?
Yes.
Anything like that?
We have registration. I have a, I have a copy of our, well, our itinerary, um. The, we have an age group that we're looking at between, you know, three, eight, eight, well, the youngest would be one because we got toys, but up to age twelve uh, to provide, you know, bikes and things like that to that age group um, of kids in the family. Um, we plan on us setting up at nine o'clock with the registration uh, to try to gather as many pa- uh, families we can. And at the end, we, we create uh, an anonymous report that we will be referred, sending back to the city so the city can see how we expended all the resources, what we did, who was, who benefited. So that we'll have a, a, a template to continue to build on. As we go forward, uh, I wasn't able to get that information from Mr. Grover. Uh, so I said, we will have to kind of uh, start over with that ourselves, but we feel comfortable that we'll be able to do that. Um, we have a partner with the local DJ, uh, DJ Haverty, he's going to be providing a sound in the area. The sheriff department will be supporting us in the areas as well, will help with the, the toys and they will provide the toys and support in the park for the kids. Uh, we have volunteers from the local community that will be helping, helping us. We have uh, uh, twelve volunteers, looking for four more, so we can have up to sixteen volunteers. But if anyone else want to help, they certainly can. Uh, registration was tied at ten o'clock uh, AM. Uh, the festivities, ten o'clock AM, we will have a lunching. Uh, we will approach our Publix stores and um, to submit to them, they told we had to submit to them a request to cater uh, for that event and they, and it looks very favorable that they will do it. Uh, and to recognize their sponsorship as well as uh, Nucor. Nucor's looking for forty-five families that they can identify to provide direct support to. So we'll be working with them on that, on that behalf. And that's pretty much uh, what it entails. A day of uh, en- entertainment for families and supportive of the um, folks who are struggling at this time of year to try to ease their burden and provide in uh, holiday resources to their, their children and families.
So, so Mrs. Sykes, I have a question. So if somebody needs, if somebody in the community outside surrounding area needs um, some type of assistant, they have to fill out some type of form to register first?
Well, the registration will be there.
Oh, they will register when they get there?
They will register when they get there.
Something that's done in advance?
No, uh, we, and over the years we found out that um, by doing it in advance and so many people show up, when we would take care of those that registered in advance, the people that are there, we didn't have enough to really do anything. And then we found out some of the people that signed up didn't show up, so we had toys still sitting there for people who actually signed up. So we required, you got to show up to participate and then whoever shows up, get, get the, the toys that's available.
Oh. Okay, so Mr. Sykes, should you not have all the participants, but you have all these toys that you weren't able to pass out? Do you save those for the following year or do you donate them?
Yeah, we, we tried to, we tried to donate them. Um, uh, year before last, we had like, I think about twelve toys left over. And we was able to work with uh, children and family and they had some adopted families who needed support, so we just donated it to them.
Okay.
Okay.
One more question, mayor. Mr. Sykes, do you find that the people that show up on that day for registration need them less or more than if you were to have them register in advance?
I, I find the people that show up that day, they seem to be more needy. Uh, this is the best way I can put it. Uh, they took the time to show up and you can really get a sense that they are really needing this support. Um, uh, the people that are there seem, seem to know the people of that community and they're, and they're pretty pretty patient with, with the people that we, that uh, when we call the, the, we have, everybody gets a, a, a ticket uh, when they register. And we try to make sure at least uh, each family gets uh, that are registered, get a bike. We can't supply every child with a bike, but at least one bike will go to someone in that family. And perhaps then the toys on the other side is also available to augment that. And so that's pretty much how we've been able to handle that and it's been pretty good.
So if you got twenty bikes and forty families, one, how you decide who gets it?
First come, whoever, whoever, we have our tickets and we have a drawing.
Uh huh.
And whoever get drawn in the ticket, that the first twenty-five get going, it gets that.
Uh huh.
And then like I said, we have the toys to augment that. So everybody should go away, every year, everybody goes with something. Nobody leaves there empty-handed. And that's, that's been the, 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 the good part of it is support the families. Uh, well, holidays and the kids all get something a- as a result. So it's been pretty, pretty good. We always get plenty of toys. The police department's been very good and helping in that area to augment. And we've also had people who were just on site. Uh, when we started getting low, we had um, uh, the tire company on sixty-four. Uh, one year they went and bought several more bikes because we ran out. And they bought, they were there, they bought several more bikes and they supplied it, um, the, this is the name, Kamala, this is Chamber?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, one year she came out and she also bought some back. And then she also, uh, I don't know what she got from a truckload of Christmas trees came in as well.
Donuts.
Augment. So things, you know, kind of like, it's kind of like fluid, even in the moment we're there. Because we just opened up anybody that can help and willing to help, we take any help that we could get uh, to support as many families as we could get. We realized that everything, we have limited amount. But when, when things are moving along, people seem to be more generous when they're there and they see there's a need, they, they step in and they help.
So as part of the request, it's not just the uh, use of the park, they're also requesting uh, a donation. So the question that I have is um, what has the city done in the, in past years as far as donating direct funds?
Uh, in the past, according to Mr. Grover, he was able to get like three thousand dollars worth of uh, financial assistance along with the use of the park. And so that's pretty much what we're asking for this year.
Yeah. Chrissy, any idea if that's the case?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So how it worked in the past was um, we would receive an invoice for everything that they, they purchased in advance. So it was always done in advance and then we would reimburse them for the purchase, but they would have to provide a line item invoice showing what the funds were spent on.
Any idea what the funding level was?
I believe one year it was between, it was three thousand and I think um, yeah, I think it was three thousand.
Do we have it budgeted, Melanie?
Yeah, we have twelve thousand budgeted in um, sponsorships. So uh, five thousand of that goes towards the fireworks.
Okay.
So we have seven left.
Got it. Okay. So the question the council needs to decide is uh, what funding level? The request is obviously between three and five. You've heard from staff in past years, we had done three, so we need to decide what you want to do.
Including the motion.
Mr. Sykes, um, how do you, how do you advertise for this? Do you, do you do it between the churches? Do you uh, advertise this event on social media?
Yeah, we, we do.
I'm curious as to how all the children in Avon Park would be benefited from this. How would they know?
We start right before school is out notifying the schools what we're doing. So all the schools in the area know. Uh, we send out flyers to all the uh, areas that uh, within the community, the stores and places like that. So that they can see that the event is coming up and if they, they can call our uh, our, our secretary and leave information with her and we get back with them and find out those that want to contribute, those that are saying, well, I have uh, so many kids and, and what can you do for them? We let them know that is what our guidelines is, one bike per family. Uh, we, and I say the last two years, we've been getting a, a lot of calls from foster parents for some reason. I don't know why, but um, uh, but we don't turn anybody down, you know, so we try to reach as many people as we can and help as many we can. And, and uh, we've also noticed in, uh, in the past uh, few years that we've been getting people, not only the Avon Park people. But we've been getting people coming over from Seaborn as well. Um, and but we tend to try to take care of those in the Avon Park area first. So we, when they're doing the registration, we can see what address that you have. And so we try to tend to take care of uh, those that are in the Avon Park area. Cause I don't know, Seaborn may have their own and I don't, and we try to avoid that. It's hard to to not uh, get caught up in, you know, people's going to do what they shouldn't do. Uh, you know, go over here and get something, come over here and get something, that kind of thing. But we try to uh, just deal with those in our local area that we know, we know a lot of the families here. So we've pretty got a pretty good handle on uh, who's in need and we get a good mixture of families that come from all of our community.
She said Lake Placid.
Yeah, Lake Placid, yeah.
So Mr. Sykes, I, I know you're a church organization and you try to do right by everybody, but you don't ask for like, I, I guess the problem I'm having is I'm not trying to support Seaborn. Seab- Seaborn need to, we, we
Yeah, yeah.
Our own kids here.
Exactly.
You know, and this is, the, this is Avon Park residents.
Mm-hmm.
This is their money.
Yeah, that's why we use the registration, so we can see the, what, the area you're coming from. Yeah, that's why we use the registration, so we can see the, what the area you're coming from. And it's the Avon Park family that we take care of first.
Okay.
And like, uh, we said, if we had something left over, then we don't mind sharing, but, but Avon Park comes first.
I, I think too, the problem with that might be you have a split household. The father might have the children that weekend and the mother may not. He might bring them down. He's got a Sebring address, but the children actually do live here in Avon Park with the mother. So in a situation like that, I think it would be kind of hard to judge who you get.
I can understand that, but I just don't want Carlos coming from Sebring taking from the kids of Avon Park.
Right.
I mean, this is the residence of Avon Park's money that we're talking about. And I'm, I think I can probably speak for them when I, when they, when I say, they'll probably want to know that this money is being funded to Avon Park.
Exactly. And that's what we strive for. We strive to take care of the families in the Avon Park areas, Avon rural area. Uh, and then like I said, if there's something left, you know, we, we're not opposed to helping someone if there's some, if there's something left.
I think Mr. Sykes understands exactly what we're trying to say here.
Yeah.
So, so go ahead, go ahead.
So Mrs., go ahead, Brittany, cause my question.
I've just got the invoice that they submitted before. Do you know the general things that we were reimbursing for? Was it just bikes and items or was it like, I want to make sure it's not like marketing stuff?
I understand. We, um, I've always submitted it to finance and Melody, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was always bikes and toys.
Yep. Yeah, another question, Brittany.
So Mr. Sykes, exactly. Do you have an idea of how much you're gonna need, you know? Uh, do you have any other, uh, donors that's gonna donate?
Yeah, like I said, we have.
Last stop.
Yeah, like I said, we, we partner with Publix. Publix is going to provide the, do the lunching. Uh, Nucor, they choose five families out of the group. Uh, we also put out, uh, uh, letters to local merchants, those businesses in our area, asking for support. And most of them have notified me that I need to see them at least, they're only going to make a decision prior, probably about two weeks prior to. Uh, and so I'm still waiting on, on that, but I'm, I'm blanking in the Avon Park area. Uh, I seen our merchants to, for support as well, any, anyone else that want to support us. Like I said, uh, people tend to be very charitable in the, in the, in the moment, in the fluid of the moment, when they see what's going on. Uh, sure, they, they divvied in, so we are able to help more people.
So the, the $3,000 that we donated last time, do you know right off the top of your head, how many bikes that purchased?
What was 16? That totals 56 bikes.
Oh.
Yeah. And, um, uh, we don't know what the, the economic cost of things, as it went up, what it would be. But hopefully we can hit something where near that, that number this time.
Yeah. All right. Well, having said that, I'll make a motion to approve the event request for Christmas toys giveaway in the amount of $3,500 and the use of Donaldson Park. Have a motion and we have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Sykes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number 12, this will be a public hearing and the first reading of ordinance number 15 dash 2024, amending solid waste ordinance.
It's an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for amendment to the city's solid waste collection program, section 82 dash 34, preparation and placement of materials to be collected to remove the requirement for payment for stolen garbage carts, but require a police report for the theft. Providing for codification, repeal the conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability of provisions, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Jerry, do we need a public hearing for the first reading?
No.
Okay, so we do, do not need to open a public hearing?
Okay.
No, it's only for annexations.
All right. Any questions from the council on this?
I just have one question, um, probably for Jerry. Do we need to leave the word stolen in there, but then put a clause at the end? If a police report is provided, cost will be, or fee will be waived?
Uh, it says, um, the cost of the stolen, um, cart shall not be imposed on the customer if the police report for the theft is provided.
But what if they say it's stolen, but they don't give a police report?
They don't get reimbursement.
So that's what I'm saying. Should we leave it in there to replace lost, stolen or damaged garbage carts? Except that the garbage carts, you know, normal wear and tear. And then the cost of the stolen garbage cart will not be imposed if a police report is provided. Should we leave, uh, I've read the word stolen in there. Should we leave stolen in there, but then provide the exclusion to if they do provide the police report? It may just be semantics. I don't know, but if it's, what happens if they say it was stolen, but they don't give the police report? Do we still charge them, but then the word stolen's not actually in there?
I can re- revise it if you wish, or we can revise it here at first reading.
Legally speaking, does it make a difference is what she's asking, Jerry?
I don't think so, but you know, it's, I, it, you never know. I mean, uh, the thing of, um, with, uh, ordinances and, uh, and the laws in general and contracts is you want them as clear as possible. If you think that there's a, it's not clear the way it is and everybody agrees and I'm happy to change it. If you feel like it would make it more clear.
I personally think if we left the word lost, stolen or damaged in there, but then put a another sentence that if the cart is stolen, but a police report is provided, fees will be waived.
Yes. I agree.
Okay, um, um, clerk, do you have that down?
I will tomorrow. I'll check it in the audio first thing in the morning.
Okay.
And send that to you in the email.
Well, go ahead and put it in your motion, how, how you would like to have it read then.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number 15 dash 2024. As stated the following, the customer shall bear the cost to replace lost, stolen or damaged garbage carts, except that garbage carts in need of replacement due to normal wear and tear and not abuse shall be replaced at no additional cost to the customer. The cost of a stolen garbage co- cart shall not be imposed on a customer if a police report for the theft is provided.
Okay.
So you're saying just put the word stolen back in there?
Just leave the word stolen.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, for the talk. That's a motion, so we do need a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Now continue.
Okay, I see what she's saying. I didn't understand at first, but you just basically want the word stolen back in there.
Just so they have, in other words, if, if, they can't just say it's stolen and not be charged, it's stolen with a police report.
All right, we do have a motion in a second. Is there any questions from, uh, the audience? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please call a roll.
McGuire?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 13, this will be the first reading of ordinance number 16 dash 2024.
An ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for complying with state statute section 125.0231. Florida statutes, provided, uh, providing for purpose and intent, providing for definitions from section 125.0231. Florida statutes, providing for prohibitions required in section 125.0231. The Florida statutes, providing for exceptions, providing for enforcement, providing for codification and repeal conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, scrivener's errors and providing an effective date. So this, um, as you recall, um, you had asked me to, um, report on, uh, a couple of years ago about the, um, um, homelessness issue and, and how that can be handled in, um, a good way. Um, that's, um, um, not, not aggressive. And, um, so a lot has happened since then, as you know, and I, I mentioned in our discussion of statutes, the Florida state, uh, the Florida statutes were changed by the legislature with their bill, basically requiring that we, um, um, not allow camping on public property. And, uh, going into a lot of detail, which I provided in my, um, information to you. And, um, as part of that, then, uh, it does open an opportunity for, um, lawsuit, attorney general and others to sue the city. And so, um, that begins January 1 of next year. So, um, we only have two more meetings between now and then. So I thought we need to get something in place anyway to provide a, um, a mechanism for, um, enforcement of this. We'll, we'll need to work with it and, um, tweak it as we go, but this is to try and get something on the floor.
So, can I answer a question there? So, so Mr. Jerry, um, so what we're saying is now a business owner, if, um, homeless is laying at their front door in a bush near, near the, um, and we don't do anything about it, the business can sue the city?
No, it's only, only if it's public property. So public places.
Public place.
Yeah, it defines public places here. Yeah, see, public property means any parks, ball field, roads, right of ways, docks, pavilions, publicly owned sidewalks, airports, lakeshore or beach, public parking lots or other, other property owned by, leased by, or maintained by the city on behalf of another public entity that lies within the city's jurisdiction or authorization for enforcement.
Example of what you're talking about, it's like if you have a business on Main Street, there's a sidewalk right there, that sidewalk is public property. So if that homeless person is sleeping on that sidewalk repeatedly and that, that business that's there wants them removed, if the city doesn't have something in place, they could then sue the city for that public property.
Okay, okay.
If the, if, if a homeless person's on private property, there's already mechanisms in place for them to be able to take care of it.
And now they can, now they can be arrested on, on public property?
At some point, but that's not what I'm recommending. Um, I'm recommending that we have, um, some, um, enforcement aspect, you know, civil remedies. And then, um, uh, we're gonna, we have a few. And then, uh, on the third violation, uh, it can be referred to the sheriff's office for trespass warning. And if it happens fourth time, then of course they can be arrested at that time.
Okay, um, uh, Mayor, I'd like to ask Randy a question. Uh, Randy, when, when, um, your staff go out to assist with the homeless, uh, are we doing it quite regularly with the same ones over and over?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same ones?
I've noticed an influx, uh, probably within the last couple of weeks. But, uh, to add to, maybe I'm getting too far into the woods, but this ordinance is not gonna assist our problem with what we have on Main Street. This is, if you read the statute and you read the verbiage in this, it talks specifically about overnight sleeping. It does, you know, we all drive down Main Street every day and we see people sleeping on the gazebo. That's during the day. This, this ordinance will not, the way I read it, this ordinance does not have teeth into that. So I think what Jerry was saying, we, he wants to get something on the book, I understand it, but we need to tweak this if you want to stop that behavior. All this stops is people sleeping in a tent, um, on the sidewalk, which I don't think is the problem. I have not seen that.
Yeah, and, and we talked about that. I, I totally agree. Um, but, you know, that, that would be, had to be one of the tweaks we made. Um, I didn't mention this, but, uh, there was a Florida, there was a United States Supreme Court case that came out. In the past, we couldn't really do much, anything if there wasn't, uh, and I mentioned that in my previous memo. If there wasn't, um, you know, available shelter and, um, that was made available to them and they refused it. That's not the case anymore after this, uh, United States Supreme Court case. Because they, they basically said that that argument regarding, um, um, the, uh, that, uh, amendment, fourth amendment, uh, issue is, has been eliminated, uh, by the Supreme Court. And, uh, so that doesn't mean everything's been eliminated, but that is one aspect closer. But everything that we do to crank down on, on, uh, this, when we don't have, uh, available shelter anywhere nearby, you know, always opens the possibility that of, of that type of lawsuit. But not under the fourth minimum anymore.
Okay. That's your recommendation to go ahead and get something on the books and then yourself, Randy and, uh, whomever else wants to be involved could, uh, further tweak this down the road.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions on this ordinance, number 16 dash 2024?
I, it's, I don't know if some of our administration could, um, meet up with the county and see if there's some kind of, uh, grants or funds available to create a homeless shelter in this area. So, you know, we wouldn't have this issue.
Sure. I mean, it's kind of a whole separate issue though.
It is a separate issue.
Of this ordinance.
Than this ordinance, you're right, but, um, I don't know, maybe that's something we could look at in the future.
Uh, that is something I suggested in my previous memo. And by the way, I'd mentioned fourth amendment, eighth amendment, cruel and unusual punishment.
Okay. Anything else on ordinance 16 dash 2024? Be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 16 dash 2024 unauthorized public camping and sleeping.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 14.
14 dash 2024, an ordinance to amend city code section 2 dash 33 of the city code, um, increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in city insurance program, providing for conflicts and severability, providing for inclusion in the code and an effective date.
Okay, as I said, this will be the second reading, so we will have a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance number 14 dash 2024 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on that can now do so. Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance number 14 dash 2024 is closed. We'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 14 dash 2024, city council members' health insurance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 15, adopt resolution 2024 dash 24.
A resolution in the city of Avon Park of the Highlands County, Florida, adopting a revised budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, providing for an effective date.
Okay, any questions about the resolution 2024 dash 24?
No.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash 24?
I'll make a motion to approve D15 of the resolution 24 dash 24, 2024 dash 24, adopting revised budget.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 16, we have JIC Avon Park Apartments LLC Development Agreement. Jason, do you want to give us a brief overview?
Yes, this is, this is for the Avon Park Apartments. They're, uh, looking to install, I think it's 90, 90 something units in, um, in an area that's in our southwest section. So it's in off, off State Street. I think it's 911 State Street is the address. So let's just put it for the agreement. This is with the current capacity fees that we have and everything was looked at. We did the calculations. Savitri did it, Jerry reviewed it. And it, this property will be getting a, a water master meter. So where our responsibility stops at the, at the meter. And, um, and the sewer is theirs inside the property until it gets out to the, and to the main. If we feel that for some reason, there's some kind of inflow and infiltration going in, then we can step in and say something, but they're responsible for all their utilities within their property. And, um, they're gonna have, they're gonna have garbage dumpsters. I think it's four, I want to say, or, uh, the garbage dumpster. So, and those are rentals, but they'll, they'll basically order those from the city. And then they pay the dumpster rental fee plus whatever the services required for the amount of people they have.
Excellent.
I, I didn't notice this when I went through the agenda, but it, it's not signed by them. And I, I usually recommend that we have it signed by them and they provide us a check before we bring it before the council. But, uh, it's already here, so if, if you want to go ahead and approve it, I would just simply say when we, um, before the mayor signs it, we want to make sure we get them to sign it first and then, um, get the, get their check with the, the signature. So we can make sure that's done. Thank you.
Okay. Altogether, it looks like 80 units, five story buildings. Um, we've got some significant water capacity fees coming to the city there. Looks like a good thing. This is what we're here to do. Any further questions on this development?
No, I know the county gave, um, I believe they received 340,000, um, from the county towards this project. Um, and then they also applied for tax credits and things like that. I know it's, um, portion of it is an affordable housing, um, complex apartments. If the numbers are still right, six units at 30% below AMI, eight units at 40% and 33 units at 60%, anticipating opening end of 2025.
Okay. All right, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we looking for a motion? Seeing none, we look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve D sixteen for the J I C Avon Park Apartments, pending their signature and check.
Yep, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would just also say that they haven't attached their legal description for their property yet as well, so they'll need to have to attach that.
Okay, understood. Item number seventeen, ongoing agenda items status, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, thank you, so this is a new staff report that I want to implement and you'll see it going forward in the consent agenda items. It's just going to be rolling items that you've tasked staff with that might not necessarily need an update at each council meeting. But I want to make sure that you know we're still working on it and give you the most up to date information. We had talked about refreshing the water and wastewater capacity fee study. I have reached out to the Florida Rural Water Association, we were supposed to have a meeting on Friday, but she had a conflict, so now it's actually tomorrow afternoon. And going forward, all that's in here right now won't be bolded and it'll just be the new updates that are bolded. And a perfect example of something that would be on here is Councilmember McCure, you just talked about, look at the county for possible homeless financing and grants, I could add that to here and just keep updating everybody on what's going on. So it's just a new report to receive and file.
I like it.
It's great.
Okay. All right, any questions for that?
Um, I did see on your report that you had the Christmas decorations where they met and three different coordinating banners were chosen. That's going to be for next year, right? They obviously, they can't get that done by this time.
We're hoping. We have a painting and prayer, they worship today.
Oh, awesome.
Good chance they might have them by the Christmas parade.
And so you called the art department with the college schedule meeting to discuss, oh, collaborating, okay, about the decorations for the mall.
Right, that one I don't think we'll be able to make this year, it'll be more next year so that we can actually get a curriculum designed that could work around what we want to do.
Excellent, anything else? Seeing none, we'll be going to item number nineteen, so we have septic treatment fees.
Okay, the previous meeting, you asked if I could have for this meeting discussion regarding the possibility of charging more for outside city septic hauling than inside septic city hauling. So I, when I first looked at it, I thought there might be a chance for it because there, we do that under section one eighty one point one nine one Florida statutes with regard to outside the city charges for rates that we have a twenty five percent surcharge, which was implemented by the Florida Legislature. And they periodically say they're going to take it away, but they do allow it and it's been found constitutional. But I would point out that the difference with that is, of course, that those those pipes go directly to those those people as opposed to this situation where they're collecting the septic from different places around the county and and so on. The the other thing that caused me to believe that it might be okay was the the fact that your your this this twenty five percent surcharge that you charge for water and sewer is based a lot on the cost of transmitting that sewage to the the treatment plant and then treating it because it's so far away, it has some problems with the the oxygenation and so on, has to be reoxygenated. So so I figured that, you know, the but the second aspect of this twenty five percent surcharge is is also the fact that you put citizens put in money to this treatment plant above and beyond the cost of the rates and so on. When they pay for bonds that are covered by things outside of your your water and wastewater account. So that seemed okay, but then as I looked at it more and went through some attorney general opinions and so on, seems to be more problematic. Because if you look at it, there's in this situation, how can you guarantee that the people you're charging the out of city rates, because they're they happen to be a business located outside the city? How can you, you know, guarantee that they didn't select any septic, any septic inside the city? And by the same token, the company that's inside the city, you know, can you guarantee that they are they're not collecting any septic from somebody that is outside of your city limits? So it just seemed really difficult and given the the potential impact of a lawsuit under forty two U S A nineteen eighty three and and cost of attorney's fees and things like that on both sides, if you lose, it seemed to me to be a very risky undertaking in this situation because it is so much different than the one way, the one eighty one process, one eighty one point one nine one process where the pipes are directly connected. So I'm recommending that you don't do it at this time. If you want to ultimately get an opinion from the attorney general's office on this, you could, but I believe that the conclusion will be the same.
Questions for Jerry? Okay, we obviously have an option to move that the septic rates will remain as previously passed or something different, so what would the council like to do?
I'm not sure.
Okay, sounds like keep it as is. Anyone opposed to that?
No.
Okay, anyone care to make that motion?
Well, actually, it doesn't even require a motion since you already have it that way. So you could
Even better.
I provide that just in case somebody wanted to make a motion.
In that case, does anyone care to make?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Item number twenty tourism updates, Ms. McGuire?
Yeah, so I received a call from Casey with T D C, the Tourism Development Council, and so we had a really good meeting last week, I was able to meet with her, her assistant, some other city officials and or county officials and the county administrator Lori, Mr. Jarrett and Dr. Seventy. So I just wrote some notes from the meeting, but we discussed Avon Park's plans for Donaldson Park, the airport and the baseball museum. They basically wanted an update on where we were with all of that kind of stuff. We talked about ways to partner with Highlands County, Sebring and Lake Placid. Their focus now is to make Avon Park a destination versus a tourist stop. A tourist stop generally visitors will come one time and then not return. If it's a destination, they tend to return over and over, possibly even relocating or starting a business or or things like that. While at the same times, meeting the citizens' needs and wants, keeping that at the forefront. We also asked that Casey keep us in the loop as far as what various organizations and events are actually requesting. When they want to host large events, they usually have the same criteria as far as like a hotel or fields that are certain sizes in in certain locations, types of fields and things like that. So she said she would keep us in the loop as far as what everybody's looking for, so we know where to focus our attention when we make improvements to parks and things like that. She did say that they are developing a kiosk system to help visitors and residents navigate places to go and things to see across all of Highlands County. So their goal is to have a kiosk at each Avon Park Chamber of Commerce, the Sebring Chamber of Commerce and the Lake Placid Chamber of Commerce. So it would be an electronic type system to keep people informed. Mr. Jarrett wants it to ping to their phones when they come to a like the strawberry festival or the blueberry festival or something like that and kind of automatically pepper them with information about other things to come. So they were unsure about how that how to make that work, so if anybody's tech savvy and wants to call them, they would appreciate it. And then we wanted to coordinate large events with the other cities, for example, Avon Park showcasing the Blueberry Festival, Lake Placid, the Palladium Festival, Sebring, of course, the Sebring Races, but if we had a revolving calendar where people from outside and then residents as well could depend on the various cities to specialize, I guess, in something. Rather than having a bunch of kind of smaller competing events, if we could all kind of come together and coordinate and actually meet with Sebring and Lake Placid and Highland and Highlands County and kind of coordinate our events to make sure that we are getting basically the most bang for our buck as far as getting visitors to come back. Also thinking forward to the next ten to twenty years, especially when finalizing the master plan for Donaldson Park. So he brought up if pickleball, sorry, Jerry, is not around forever, what can we do with that space that we just spent all that money on? So Mr. Jarrett was proud of the fact that we would have this community area that was going to be covered, that we could very easily repurpose for a different use if for some reason pickleball does die out. We also, we discussed two grants that the city, and I talked to Danielle about this already, that the city can apply for through T D C. One is a water activity grant, so they're they're thinking more of like the inflatable water obstacle course type things. I did propose our idea that we had for the floating dock and floating amphitheater type thing, so we can we can discuss that. There's also another plan, planning grant for sports facilities and expansions, I didn't know if Jason wanted to check in on that one as far as I think it's up to like twenty five thousand or something like that to pay for a planning with the facilities. And then overall, it was just a very positive meeting, everyone involved was excited to go forward, everybody wants to be on the same page as far as making Highlands County a destination for both citizens and visitors.
I just have a question for you, Brittany, did did it get brought up in the meeting about the entryway sign at the Highlands County line?
We did not discuss that. I know Danielle had gone to a county meeting, so I'd read her notes on it. I mean, nobody, nobody brought it up, we kind of wanted to keep keep it as a positive, let's move forward and see what we can do going from here.
Okay. Anything else on that? Seeing none, city manager updates?
Speaking of positive, I'd like to thank Jerry for a five hundred dollar donation to our Christmas decoration fund.
Here, here, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have the Christmas parade December second and Avon Park will have a float, Public Works is putting that together, all the employees are really excited to decorate it.
Okay.
I have an idea for what I'm gonna call a water and sewer angel fund. So if your bill is twelve dollars and thirty cents and you want to round it up to thirteen dollars, that seventy cents would go to an angel fund and we could work together to define who would be eligible to get that money, whether it's senior citizens that or, you know, a single mother or father or who would be eligible to get their water bills paid. Or if they need a plumber to come out, we could use the angel fund. If you'd like me to pursue that idea, just let me know and I'll I'll bring it back more refined.
Jerry, do you see a problem with?
No, I don't see any problem with that.
I like it.
Dr. Kelly, who would make the decision who gets the fund? Who, what?
That's what
Council or you?
Well, we would define the parameters here, the council would vote on what the parameters are for us to donate to the individuals or the household. So ultimately, you you would decide.
Okay.
Okay.
So there you need to have a cap on the amount that you would donate, so it would be just to one person?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
That one person that's late on the bill every time now.
Exactly.
And and Dr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Round up, each residence get their choice?
They they would have the choice, it would be completely voluntary.
And they would know why they're doing it?
Absolutely, yeah. If you want me to pursue that, yes.
Is anyone opposed to her pursuing that?
No, but I just have one more question, is that going to be an online thing that you have the option to do that? Or is that going to be maybe on the bill where you could round up?
Both, yes.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Okay.
And then lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, you said it was positive, it was. No, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Anything else to give to the city?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is for Jason, Jason, I'm trying to get an update on memorial, payment of memorial.
So the last update that I heard is, I believe it's gonna be January is what they said, it was supposed to be happening now, it's supposed to already be happening, so I asked, because we were ready, we were ready with a one of the things that we had to do for an area that that you had pointed out, lifting up a manhole. But they told me there was, I I think they had an issue with their funds, so they're having to wait a little bit. And they had told me it's it's at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year, okay. Real quick, how's our Go Gov thing doing?
We did a live training right before I or while I was on vacation, so I am following up with them, I asked them when the rollout's gonna be, I'm just waiting on a response from them, but we're pretty much there.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor?
Yep.
Christie, this is for Christie. I would like to take this opportunity on record to say thank you for holding the city together. I know it was hard, there was some fun times in it, but you held the city together until we was able to get a permanent city manager. And no matter how everybody else feel, I say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And to Dr. Kelly? You know, we have already spoken this, right? But I would like to say, thank you for informing this council in a way that I'm quite sure that some of us would say we've never seen before. And I would like to say thank you because when you keep me informed, I can make better sound judge decision and I would like to say thank you for that.
Agreed. Thorough, direct and to the point, love it. All right, anything else to give to the city? Seeing none, I intend a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.